All right, folks, we'd like to welcome everyone here today for our meeting of the zoning board of adjustments. It is August the 14th, Monday of 2023. I have 1:31, 1:31 PM. And first of all, well, I'm going to call to order and then I want to introduce a new member, Mimi Clark, and welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, and so that's official now, correct? All right. You're officially on board, Mimi.
Thank you.
And so your next thing you're going to have to do is you're going to be chairman. No?
Oh, go ahead, I'll talk right now.
Yeah, okay, okay, all right. Pays well, by the way. The pay is wonderful. Oh, the check's in the mail? All right, do we have a quorum? How many do we have here today? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven? Well, we have a full one. Wow. Hey, everybody's wanting to get out of the heat. And by the way, folks, we're going to drag this out to 5 o'clock because of the 100 and plus degrees out, if y'all don't mind.
Yeah, I'm not getting any.
Dinner will be served at 5:15. And then, you know, we are one day closer to cooler weather. But that's beside the point. All right, item number two, review and take action to any related to the minute records of the regular meeting held on Monday, July the 10th. Any questions from the board on the meetings from July the 10th? There being none, I need a motion to approve.
To approve.
Second.
I've got a second, all right. The minutes, oh, I got to take a vote, too. Do we have a vote here on the minutes? There you go.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 7-0, 7-0. Yeah. Moving right along to item number three. Ray, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. Item number three is ZBA 23-16. 2334 Fisherman's Road, single-member district number one, Tommy Hebert. A request for approval of a variance from Section 501.8 of the zoning ordinance to allow a 15-foot front yard setback instead of the required 25 feet in the single-family RS1 zoning district. And Ray, you're on.
I am.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. This is Ray Limeberry, planner. And this is 2334 Fisherman's Road. It is .260 acres, District One, Tommy Hebert, in the Nazareth neighborhood, and it is RS1. They are asking for 15 foot instead of the 25 foot. And this is the property as is. Right now, it is vacant. And we did send out seven notifications. We received zero in favor, one opposed. The one in opposed mentioned that the curve already makes it hard to see. So they are, I guess, afraid that it'll also make it more difficult to see. And so we were looking at, I'm going to switch back to this picture. So that curve, let's see if I can get that. There we go. The curve right in here makes the right-of-way a lot larger than some of the others. So we were, it makes it almost 60 feet, which is typically 5 to 15 feet. So the extensive separation from the street to the proposed home shouldn't affect anything, and we feel that staff recommending approval for this variance is justified. Because again, like I said, there's such a huge right-of-way that...
Did you say 60 feet?
60 feet, yes, yes. And so staff is recommending approval to allow the 15 front yard setback instead of the 25. If you have any questions, let me know.
You don't need to read anything more into the record or anything, right?
What was on the previous slide, Ray?
I'm sorry, did I go too quickly? The curve of the road makes the right-of-way between the street and the property line almost 60 feet, which is in excess. The extensive separation from the street to the proposed home is not typical, and it is not the result of any action by the applicant or the previous property owners. There are other houses on the street that have similar issues. And the proposed purpose of the front setback requirement is to ensure that the homes are set back a distance from the street. Given how big the right-of-way is, the purpose is maintained, and granting this variance will not adversely affect the area.
What was the question?
Any questions?
I'm not sure what the opposed email might mean because are they going to build right up to the edge of the property line?
Oops, I went too far.
I can see how the curve in the road would do that, but...
Again, that is all they said. It was a very short, just, they were worried that the curve already
Restricts.
Restricts their view. So again, my guess would be that they're just looking at the feet from the road to the property line, not from the property line back.
And that right-of-way there is what, 50 feet, did you say?
60 feet.
60 feet. That's a lot of right-of-way.
And you can see, I didn't give a huge aerial shot, but you can already see there are a few other houses that are, that one, this one, are closer.
The red line there is where they want, is that the, what'd you say about the red line on the front?
Yeah, the red line is the lot that we're talking about.
Property line?
Property line.
Okay, so you want to go 15 feet back from that?
Yes.
Looks like the house next door might be...
See, in retrospect, it's basically the same place as the house next door.
On the other side of that? Sure that there's an issue.
I don't think so either. All right. Any more questions for Ray? Questions?
Yep.
Okay, any public comment? Hoping for public comment. Anybody here representing the lot of anything and want to get up and say anything? Come on up. Uh huh. State your name for the record, please, sir.
My name is Donnie Jones.
Donnie, welcome.
Thank you. The proposed house would be a two-story house, and from our gathering of the measurements, from the street to the property line is approximately 60 feet, and the house would be another 15-foot back. Puts it 75, roughly 75-foot back. And trying to keep with the HOA, the Lake Board of keeping the house 75-foot off the water is where we try to stay in that happy medium and not block out the views of other homeowners along the backside of the lake.
So the HOA has approved your plans and everything?
So that's where we're kind of just stuck on what we do depending on, yeah, if we can't, we just have to totally scrap the set of plans and start fresh.
I got you, okay. All right. Any questions for Don?
Thank you.
You don't plan to build a garage or anything else in front of that?
No, ma'am, that's the furthest it's going to be forward. I don't know if there was a piece of, that we had kind of like a little site plan. It was just showed it laid there. And the two lines running through were like at 25-foot, 20-foot, 15-foot. So that's where we kept trying to see, and keeping the backyard all wide open and allowing to have, you know, a nice back patio.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any questions? Any board comments? There being none, let's have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
There's a second. The vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 7-0. Next item, number four, is ZBA 23-17, 5178 Enclave Court, single-member district number one, Tommy Hebert. A request for approval of a variance from Section 501.8 of the zoning ordinance to allow 15-foot yard setback on a corner lot instead of the required 25 feet in the single-family RS1 zoning district. Hello, Erin, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Erin Benoyle, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. This is an interesting case that has a double frontage and an area that's being newly developed. If you see on that front page there, where it talks about a 15-foot setback, that was derived from an early site plan. The applicant is actually here and says he can do that at a 20-foot setback. So in lieu of a 10-foot variance, he's probably going to be looking or more requesting like a 5-foot variance. And so I just want that to be clear. You'll see in here that we reference a 10-foot quite a bit, but that was from an earlier site plan, and we'll show those two site plans on here. Again, this is 5178 Enclave Court, out in the Country Club neighborhood. It's the south part of Bentwood. Single-family residence, and Tommy Hebert is the single-member district. On this sheet, it's hard to see roads because our images are from before roads were actually built. But Wolf Creek is the north-south road, and it is a minor collector where Enclave Court is just a local road, and those two designations come into play. We did send out notices. Most of the properties are still actually owned by Bentwood Country Club or by realtors that are working on selling them to builders to build new homes. So there were no responses in opposition. And I say no responses in support, other than the land developer, Bentwood Country Club, did send back, and I put exactly what they said, so, well, that makes perfect sense, after we said this is what they're asking for. So one would see that as probably in support of the request of variance. Zoning, single-family residential. And of course, you see that area to the bottom of the page. That's actually outside the city limits, so it does not have a zoning designation. And that also kind of comes into play with Wolf Creek, and I'll show a map in just a moment. This is at the corner of Enclave Court and Wolf Creek, looking at the lot. So kind of enclave is going that way, and then to the south, to your left, is going to be Wolf Creek. But you also see kind of those tree line there at the back, and that is undeveloped land at this time. Here's the plat as it was presented back in, I want to say 2021, but it might have been 2020. Looks like it was signed and filed. It is, let me make sure I do this before I turn it off. This lot right here, number 60. And so Wolf Creek here going north-south and Enclave Court going east-west. It was platted at that time with this document with two 25-foot setbacks on either side for a double-frontage lot. This is that future transportation map. Again, it's a little misleading here, but if you follow this line here, that is the city limit line that goes around here, and that's down Riviera on the backside of those lots. The rest of this, until you get back over to Butler Farms, is outside the city limits. You can see Wolf Creek is projected as a future minor collector to come down and connect with a future arterial, which actually kind of curves over and is Foster Road at this time. And so those are all future developments. We don't know when that future development is. We do not have a preliminary plat for that area just south. We do have a preliminary plat for this area, and so the anticipation is this area will build out first, and this area will be second in, we don't know how many years. It just depends on our development as a community going that way. This is the first site plan, and it's very hard to read because there's lots of information going on there. But right here is actually, it's a 15-foot setback with this little piece right here. The garage is actually set back a little bit further back, but it's just this piece of the structure that would be coming out that's actually a livable piece of the structure as we understand it, where the rest of this is going to be the garage area. Let's see, I think maybe the next one is the updated. It's turned just a little bit, I was trying to get it to fit on there. But here, you can clearly see that with that little piece that comes out now, he is showing a 20-foot, 9-inch setback. So a 5-foot variance at that point for that setback. And this, on the bottom of that page, is Wolf Creek that terminates currently at the city limits until the future develops that way. So now we have to analyze this and say, does it meet our ordinances? The applicant did purchase the lots that were currently platted in that configuration. The literal interpretation, and I'm going to go back just to this one, as we interpret double-frontage, you can see these lots are facing Wolf Creek, and these lots are facing Wolf Creek. 59 and 60 are double-frontage lots because the properties around them are not all facing the same direction. If it was all, if all of this was facing one way and all the lots behind were facing another and same going around, then we could say, well, those are probably single-frontage lots. So that's the challenge that we have here. And you can see the lots on the south side of the plat are much smaller than the ones on the north side. They're much bigger properties. However, they were still platted with 25-foot setbacks. So again, that's kind of the literal interpretation that's contrary to the lots east and north along Wolf Creek. They are facing Wolf Creek. If this lot was to face Wolf Creek, the expectation would be a 25-foot setback. And since it is a double-frontage, that is the literal interpretation that it has two front yards. The applicant believes that granting this variance would not allow construction of the, would allow construction of the home and not contrary to the public interest. The major concern we have is that future minor collector. Now, the question is, when does that come into play for our community? There's a reason why you have setbacks off of minor collectors. Again, when does that come into our community? And so for our literal interpretation right now, it doesn't seem to meet our ordinance right now. But that doesn't mean things don't change, or maybe a variance is granted that it might meet that interpretation. Lots and lots of words on there. But the lot is slightly irregular. Again, it is smaller than the ones on the north side, but it is a much bigger lot than is normal and than our 50 by 100 lots. It does have a linear frontage of about 96 before the arc of the curve there where Enclave and Wolf Creek meet. So it is bigger than the standard lot, but it does have some minor irregularities, and it is being a double-frontage lot. That 25-foot on both sides does affect. Currently, the staff is recommending denial. I'm going to switch from this one to the next one because I put this one, and you see that there's a 10-foot variance of the standard. They are the same recommendations of a denial, but this one is for the 5-foot variance to the standard. We did have just one note. It appeared, based on the first site plan, maybe not the second site plan, but the first site plan, that the driveway width is more than what our standard is, has nothing really to do with zoning ordinance. But we just wanted it to be a note for the builders so if they needed to reach out to the right folks to get that approved through a separate process if they needed to.
The driveway width?
Yes, we have a minimum standard for driveway widths on how wide they can be, but...
I couldn't hear you.
That's, yes, ma'am, sorry about that.
All right, two, and this is a three-car garage, correct?
I think it's a three. I don't remember if I saw the elevation, but the applicant is here, and he could probably clarify that for us. Any other questions for me before you talk with...
How much is the right-of-way?
The right-of-way for a minor collector is 60 feet. And so that one does have 60 feet, being a fairly new right-of-way. Paving width for a minor collector is 50 feet. So there's five on either side as far as right-of-way. And then you, and although I think this side of the right-of-way is a little bit more...
It looks it.
And I'm going to go back to that plat, if I can find it, right there. Yeah. You're going to have to have better glasses than I've got to read that distance. Any other questions for staff?
So is it my understanding that Wolf Creek at some point will continue? Because I've walked that a lot, and it just dead-ends right there.
Correct, yes. It does dead-end right there, right now. That's the terminal point of the development as well as the city limits. The intent is, with the thoroughfare plan, that it would continue south at some point. So whenever that next section comes into preliminary plat, they would have to accommodate for a minor collector connecting there in some manner, yes.
So Erin, you were saying that it was, the staff wants to deny it because it was the 15-foot. Is that correct?
Correct.
As it was written before, and at 5-foot? What is the staff saying?
We would still be in denial because it doesn't meet our zoning ordinance. I think we would feel much more comfortable at a 5-foot instead of a 10-foot. But I think our official stance is that it doesn't meet our zoning ordinance right now.
Thank you.
Do you have any idea in the future, probably not, which way the lots will be facing on that extension?
My assumption, and this is my assumption not, is they're probably going to maybe face south with a similar cul-de-sac. See how this is cul-de-sac here? They may have another cul-de-sac here that would have lots that would face to the south. If you kind of, and I'm going to go to back here, and as you see Lot 59, 60, or 61 and 62 to the north, all of those will probably face Wolf Creek. They don't, 59 doesn't have to, but they're all going to be at 25 feet. This would be at 20 feet from the...
Because of the front porch?
Yeah.
And your question, Gary, gets at one of the concerns is if if they do like there is north on Wolf Creek, if all of those homes face Wolf Creek, then the next-door neighbor to the south is going to have a neighbor's house that sticks out farther than theirs, in which part of the reason for the setbacks is to have kind of a consistent line across there. Again, 5 feet is much better than 10 feet in that respect.
Yes.
Our preference is to have it all the same regardless.
I have no problems with the 5 feet.
Okay. Any more questions for staff over there? I think we're good?
Okay.
Thank you, Erin. Public comment?
I'll let you know I only got to this in the first place. So...
State your name.
Eric Von Rosenberg, representing the buyers of this lot here. So when they purchased this lot, this was a while back. This is probably two or three years ago. If you look on the plat that was given to the homeowners, or the buyers, rather, from Bentwood, it was not a final plat. So what it showed on the side was a 15-foot electrical easement setback. It had not been, it had not been filed and platted with a 25-foot coming all the way around the side. So when they started on this expedition of trying to get plans designed, that's what they were basing it on. It is kind of a pinched-in awkward shape. If you look at the plans, it's a pretty good-sized house, too, and four kids. So I think already they were kind of working within what they were trying to accomplish based on what they had, which is how they got to the two-story. So basically, what I'm saying is, if we would have known, if they would have known that when they got started on those plans from very beginning, we probably wouldn't be here. But they waited two years through COVID, or towards the end of COVID, the height increase on prices of materials. Everything's finally come down, now they're ready to go. It was kind of a shock to us when we realized that, based on the final plat, there's a 25-foot on the side. We were able to configure it to get the 5 feet. We didn't need the 10. And basically, that's what we're asking for today, just that 5 feet, rather than having to go back and redesign the house or start chopping stuff off.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
Yes, sir.
Go for it, Gary.
Your fence is going up, is shown on here. It's on the site plan, it's going up to the right-of-way, well, property line there on, I guess that's Wolf Creek side. And on the future, if there goes a future development, that's going to be... Can you move the fence back?
We can't. I'm not looking at it, but if I remember right, the fence should go to the back corner of the garage. Is that correct? Which is further back.
I'm not seeing that on this.
I don't know. I'll try. I'm not much of a techie guy. Yeah, so... Yeah, we would, Gary, to answer your question, we would come off, pretend like I have a pointer here for a minute. We would, we would come off the back corner of the, of most likely, the back of the garage there. Just to cover the AC units, and that's it.
Yeah, to the, yeah, straight across there, and that's what I'm seeing.
Right. And again...
That'd be a good setup for future development.
That's something that the draftsman just threw on there. The other thing that he threw on there is, if you look at the apron part of the, to kind of address what he was... If you look at the apron section of the driveway, that happens to us all the time, where we have to make an adjustment because the draftsman just draws it that way.
Okay.
And then typically, whenever we have to do an inspection on it, we know that we have to taper it in and then feather it out.
If you don't have any problem moving the fence back to the edge of the garage there, I don't think I have much of a problem with it.
Yeah, because at that point, it'll be, that'll be within line sight of whoever's going to be behind him in the future.
Pretty close.
Yes, sir.
All right, any questions, Mr. Von Rosenberg? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, board, what do y'all think?
I will make a motion to approve the 5-foot setback. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comment? Anyone? I'm good.
I agree.
I'm good.
All right, let's go to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 7-0. I forgot to say aye. Aye. All right, item number five. ZBA 23-18, 708 South Randolph Street, single-member district number three. Harry Thomas. A request for approval of a variance from Section 501.8 of the zoning ordinance to allow 5-foot front yard setback instead of the required 25 feet in the two-family RS2 zoning district. We're going for a home run on this one, aren't we? All right.
Hello, Ray Limeberry again. So yes, this one is 708 South Randolph. It's .141 acres, District Three, Harry Thomas, in the Fort Contra neighborhood. They are requesting 5-foot front yard setback instead of the 25. They already got ready to lay the foundation and received a red tag that it was too close, that it didn't meet the setbacks. So they came in to see us. So this is a picture of at least the property a couple weeks ago. We did send out notifications. We received none in favor, none opposed. The original house was built outside the minimum setbacks. So they are building the house back to where the original house was. There are other properties within the street that also have about a 14-foot, maybe 15-foot setback. This is an older neighborhood, and let's see, if the variance is granted, the use of the land would not be contrary to public interest. It doesn't adversely affect the area. So I'm also going to mention, what I handed out to you is, back in 2017, it was discussed with the board, a memo was brought up to that board, the ZBA board in 2017, about home builders measuring the setbacks incorrectly, and that maybe we should make a process for it if they have already done it and measured incorrectly. And that board at the time said that we would trust the home builders. So however, even though, again, we feel that they did make a mistake and they made... So however, even though, again, we, we feel that they did make a mistake and they measured incorrectly, we, we are denying the 5, or we would recommend denial of the 5-foot front yard setback. I did not, oh my gosh, I didn't put the site plan on, I swear I put the site plan on here? I guess I didn't. Okay, there, it looks, based on the site plan, that the carport is what goes closer, not the actual house. The actual house is 15-foot, based on the floor plan and the site plan and everything. So staff will, does recommend approval of a 14-foot setback instead of the 5 that they requested. Because I do think it's the carport.
The stuff we have, that's what they gave to the permit department?
Correct.
Okay. And your picture there that you showed, they haven't poured the foundation yet?
They, they just have it set up. They have not poured it yet.
That looks more than-
The applicant is here.
Where's the, I see the curb, how far back is that picture? Is that-
You can see the curb, that's from the street, so you can see the curb out there in front.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, see the curb right there?
It must be.
It's showing the right-of-way.
Yes, so-
What did they measure, do we know?
So we think they, or they said they measured straight back from the curb, from the curb back, which, which would have been 25 feet.
Right. With the right-of-way?
With the right-of-way.
So how far back are they, 25 feet from the curb?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, the carport, the carport is 25 feet back from the curb.
And the right-of-way is how big, how much right-of-way?
I believe it's 15 feet, 20 feet? 15 or 20 feet is what we measured it. Because that's how we figured out they needed 5-foot, was because we were thinking if they measured 25 feet from the curb back, we measured the right-of-way to be 20 feet. They were only asking for 5 feet, or they were wanted 5 feet instead of 25 feet. But then again, like I said, if you look at the plan, we figured that was the carport that is closest to the-
Should be.
It should be.
Yes.
Based on the plan.
Because the rest of it looked like a driveway setup going to it.
So in other words, the staff recommended 14-foot setback would result in them not having to change their plan.
Correct. Yeah, correct.
Okay.
But we wouldn't support 5 feet?
Is there, that's an old area, there's an alley beside it, huh? You have an alley?
Yes.
20-foot right-of-way. Is there any way you can abandon right-of-ways?
We do it all the time.
Yes.
So they have wiggle room on that, right, in that big right-of-way? Okay. All right.
But if, if you notice, the, the house right below it is also right there.
Mm-hmm. Are they in crook style?
And this house also, we measured it at about 15 feet. So it'll put it in line with all the others that are there.
Will it? Okay.
For the 14.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Y'all would approve a 14, or staff will go along with a 14-foot minimum setback?
Yes.
In line with their Jason houses, okay? Any questions for Ray? Okay, thank you, Ray. Public comment? State your name, please, sir, for the record.
I'm Michael Gonzalez.
Hi, Mike.
With 708 South Randolph. The lot was purchased, their name was actually, I purchased it through a family member. And we didn't really know the setback, so my best bet was to just put the house where the original house was at. So that's kind of what we decided to do. It's from the curb to the driveway is 26-foot. And I know that's identical to a couple of properties that are in that neighborhood.
Okay. You have that 20-foot right-of-way in the front, so.
Is there any other question?
The right-of-way is kind of the saving grace on this, I guess, huh? Do you have a question? Anyone have questions?
Can you work with the 14-foot setback?
I'm sorry?
Will it work? I mean, do you have to redo anything for the 14-foot setback?
No, at this point in time, the way it is, no. It, it would work, yes. And we're unable to move it at the stage that we're at. I mean, we're actually already been approved for concrete, I mean, for plumbing, so rebar's already been set, so my next step is actually to pour. That's the reason of the variance. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Will there be public and board comments on this? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 14-foot setback.
Motion with staff recommendation, that's motion on, is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a second, let's have the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 7-0. Watch those right-of-ways, Mike, on the next one. They'll throw you every time. All right, item number six, appeal of interpretation. Oh goodness gracious, here we go.
So this is pretty rare, but the board does have the ability to hear appeals of staff interpretation of the ordinance. So when-
Do I need to read this in?
Uh, yeah, you probably should.
All right, item number six, appeal of interpretation, a request for an appeal of the planning director's interpretation of the zoning ordinance to disallow a variance from 500, 500-foot separation requirement between short-term rentals.
And I should step back and introduce myself first.
Yes.
John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. And so, as I was saying, periodically we'll get a request for interpretation of a particular provision of the ordinance. How is that to be applied and how do we interpret it? And we will make a formal interpretation when requested, which is what we did in this case. And a citizen can appeal that interpretation and say, you know, we're not reading the ordinance correctly, or some other reason that, that we should be interpreting that particular provision of the ordinance differently than we interpret it. And, and that's your, your job under the ordinance is to review that interpretation and determine whether or not it should be what the staff interpreted, or maybe something different. In this case, as you mentioned, this is the interpretation of the part of the ordinance talking about separation of short-term rentals. First, just for reference, in case it comes up, what is a short-term rental? Our ordinance defines it as an establishment used for dwelling purposes for less than 30 days. So you think Airbnb, VRBO, those kinds of things. And that's a pretty common distinction among cities, because that's where, if you're renting for less than 30 days, that's when you have to pay hotel tax. And so most cities distinguish between short-term rentals and somebody just renting a house for three months, six months, you know, a year. And so that provision of the ordinance regarding short-term rentals says no short-term rental can be located within 500 feet of another short-term rental. The applicant, this particular applicant asked for a variance from that. He, they have a property where they want to do a short-term rental that is closer than 500 feet to another one. They asked if they could come to you all to, to seek a variance from that 500-foot separation. Our interpretation of the ordinance was that that is not a variable provision. So in other words, if you're within 500 feet, you simply can't do it. There's no option to come to you all for a variance. So in short, what they're asking for is for you all to interpret the ordinance a little bit differently than we did and say they can in fact come to you for that variance. Just a little bit of background, the applicant did come to city staff asking if there were any short-term rentals within 500 feet of that subject property. Based on the mapping information that was available to staff at that time, we did not see any. Now, there are a couple of reasons for that. One is there had been a short-term rental approved not too recently, before that, that had not shown up on our mapping yet. And also, we were, we were having a backlog, we had lost, at this time, we'd recently lost two planners, those positions had not been filled. And again, we had a backlog of updating our maps, so when the staff person that was asked this question looked on our maps, there were no short-term rentals within 500 feet, when in fact there had been one approved that just didn't show up on the maps. So that led to the situation where the property owners relied on that to go and purchase this property. Then when they came in for the conditional use approval from the planning commission, they were told, I'm sorry, we can't take that application because you do have one within 500 feet. I think I already covered this, but that's the provision in the ordinance that says short-term rental use may not be located on a lot that is within 500 feet of a lot on which another short-term rental is located. I think-
Can I ask how old that?
2013.
17 or 13?
13.
No, it was, it was after 13, because I was, I was here for that and I wasn't here in 13, so I, 15, 16, 17, somewhere around there.
So that's when, that's when the 500 feet was-
Correct. That's right. And I think I covered this, we did reject their application, but then the applicant came in asking for the variance. Can we seek, can we seek a variance to having another STR within 500 feet? And so just a little bit about how we interpreted the ordinance, the city's ordinance does say that a variance shall not be granted to allow a use that is not allowed in the specific district in question by the use regulations. And so we believe that this is a little different than allowing a house closer to the property line. It's actually allowing a use within an area being the 500-feet separation from another house, another STR. And so, again, our interpret, I know I'm not being very clear here, but our interpretation is that allowing one STR within 500 feet of another would be a use variance, which our ordinance and state law doesn't allow us to do. You can vary measurable standards on a lot, like setbacks, roof height, those kinds of things, but not allowing a use on another property. I think this is basically what I just said.
So what we're doing here is not exactly clear, what we're doing it legally, legally, or not? That doesn't-
Well, I think the question is, and I'll let Brandon answer from the legal standpoint, but the, the question basically posed before you is, should we accept an application for a variance from this 500-foot standard? In other words, is it a variable provision? Or if you're within 500 feet, it's just a flat no, you can't, you can't do it with, with no recourse.
Okay. How far, how far away is it from the other short-term rental?
364 feet.
364 feet.
And I don't think we included a, a map in here. It is, if you picture where they're located, they are facing one street. The other one is, the existing short-term rental is on one street. You go behind the alley to the next row of homes, and then it's across the other street behind that.
Okay.
So it's not like next door or down the street, or it's not behind them in the alley, it's across another street. So there is a reasonable argument, if you were going to vary the 500 feet, that you might consider a variance in that situation. But again, our interpretation of our ordinance is that that's not something that could be varied.
It's kind of, kind of a circumstance here, though, where they were told one thing. Does that happen often? I mean, is this the first time this has happened with, under a short-term rental situation?
As far as I know, it's the only time that's happened with a short-term rental.
Okay.
Again, we, we try to be, we try to answer those questions not definitively and say, based on what we have, it doesn't appear there's one within 500 feet. We actually don't do a full-blown analysis of it until they submit an application. The, the other, the, sort of the secondary problem here is, is based on that information, they purchased the property. Whereas in a, in a lot of cases, people going through something like this will make an offer to purchase contingent upon a rezoning or a conditional use. And then once it goes through the process and gets approved, then, then they'll finalize the, the deal.
Okay. We can go on with that one, can't we?
Yeah, because I mean, part, part of the issue here is, even if we were, would accept their appeal and you all would grant the variance, they would still have to go before the planning commission to get the conditional use for the short-term rental, which itself is no guarantee.
Right, right.
Are you saying legally, they cannot be within 500 feet, it's a use variance?
That's our interpretation of the ordinance, that's correct.
Well, how do we, how do we protect the, I don't call them consumer, from going out, do it, trying to do their due diligence to find out if it's allowed, and then go spend the money to purchase the property and thinking that it's allowed, and finding out it's not allowed down the road? What, what's, I mean, it's, it's one thing, they come in, and they look on the maps, they're, feeling pretty comfortable that there's not one there. I mean, who else would they go to to find out? Besides the city? And then not being there, do y'all have any disclosures that you give them that this is just, we can't guarantee it at this moment because of X, Y, or Z, or before they put their neck out on the, on the money side?
No, we, we, we try to be clear, although we probably aren't always as clear as we should be, about, you know, this is just based on the information we have. I mean, I guess I would hate to see us get to a point where every time somebody comes in, we have them sign something saying, I understand that this information may, may be incomplete, and it's just based on the best available information, but-
But you, you said a lot of people do it with contingencies, that it will be approved. I guess these folks didn't do the contingency part.
They didn't, and they can maybe answer this better. They, what they did tell us is that they, they were under the understanding that before they could apply, they actually had to own the property.
I see.
But under, under the way our rules work-
Yes.
As long as you have an offer to purchase a property, or even the owner, the current owner gives you the authority to act on their behalf for the property, that's sufficient for, you know, we don't want somebody to go out and, and start trying to rezone somebody else's property, so we want you to have some interest in the property. But having an offer on the property is sufficient to do that.
Contingency, top comment.
Generally, it would generally depend on your auction period of time, not how you're doing that as well.
I see.
We'll have zoning cases almost every month where one of the applicants is not the owner of the property, but they've made an offer contingent upon the rezoning, getting through the process.
Okay.
That's a pretty regular thing.
So, so can we look ahead a little bit from this? If we, if we were to say, yes, this is something that, that they should be able to present and ask for a variance, short-term rentals being what they are, are we opening up a flood box?
Well, you would open up the option that people could seek that variance. Now, again, they would still have to go to the planning commission to get the conditional use. And one of the things the planning commission looks at is, how many others are there in the area, how close are they to that one? So there would be another check in the process. So I don't think I'd say it would, you know, it would open up the floodgates to a bunch of STRs, because there's still a discretionary process later on.
But there would also be a definition given as to why they're, you know, able to do that within a certain amount of feet. So I sat on that board whenever the short-term rentals came about, and the reasoning for the 500 feet is that there were several people on the board that didn't want the whole city to turn into a short-term rental. So that was a number that was picked out of the sky and put on paper, basically. And it's my understanding that the city is going to be relooking at all of the short-term rental information that's, that we have right now and possibly be redoing that in the future.
That, that's right. We recently got some direction from city council to-
Okay.
Bring back some revisions to that ordinance. One of the things we're going to look at is the 500 feet, and possibly even eliminating that. So within the next few months, we'll be taking something to city council that could change these rules at that time.
And you know, with mapping, I don't know how y'all map, I have no idea how that's done. I just think of things like that as magic, once they're, you know, once we vote on them at planning commission, it becomes it, it just automatically appears on the mapping. So there's- So there's been, you know, several different things that happened along the way. But with those things being said, you know, I think we should grant the variance personally.
Well, and I think, is it on this slide?
Yeah, so, so right now, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, so today, all you're deciding is the interpretation of the ordinance. If you say, yes, they can seek a variance, they'll actually have to apply for that, and you would hear it at your next meeting. So you're not actually approving their particular case today.
They'll know their location, we'll know how close it is, we'll know...
Correct. That's right.
Okay. But we can't do it all today?
That's right.
It's not anybody's fault. We didn't have a planning person for a while. We shouldn't have penalized for that.
I think that was it. Yep.
Any more questions for John? Good. Thank you, John. All right.
I do have a question. I'm sorry. Yes, I do.
Go right here.
Okay. So we meet the first Monday of the month normally, and if, which would probably be the second Monday of the month next month because of Labor Day. So if the proponents come and we say, move forward and vote on that, and it passes, then is there an opportunity for them to go the next week to planning commission and have it voted on at that time? Work those simultaneously instead of staggering it out another month?
Yeah, we would have to look at the dates of the notices, and if that gives us enough time to send out the state-required notices. We can definitely try to do that. If there's a way to make it work within all of the timelines, that would shave off basically a...
Right, because we're, I mean, we're, we're holding them hostage right now.
Right. Yeah, we will, we'll definitely look at that, and if it's at all possible within the timelines, we can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
John, I have a, I have a question. Would you say this is an unusual circumstance for this particular item?
Well, it, it is. But remember that you're, you're making an interpretation of the ordinance. So if that's your interpretation of the ordinance, anybody else in the future could, could seek this same variance. Now, again, you all have the ability to grant or not grant that variance. So there's still a check on that, but...
So we're opening it up for any circumstance, not just this unusual circumstance that we, we have here? But the, missing the planning directors, it wasn't on the map. They did their due diligence. They did the best they could, and all of a sudden, boom, it got caught. And that's what I'm trying to get, that's what I'm trying to get to, if we, if we could just get this under some kind of umbrella of a special circumstance for any of the future.
And then you also need to think in the future, if the city's going to be redoing the ordinance anyway, it's not going to matter.
Well, that's, that's in the future. What do you think?
But so is this what you're talking about?
Brandon?
Well, I just want to address one issue, and that's with, you know, the planning person that, that told them wrong. It's unfortunate circumstances. We hate to see that. But any one staff member of the city can't override the ordinance. So we actually have an ordinance provision in the zoning code that says, you know, any permit issued in conflict with the zoning ordinance shall be null and void and may not be construed as waiving any provisions of the zoning ordinance. So I hate that they were told wrong, but that doesn't mean the employee can override that. Now, I mean, y'all get to decide, you know, the interpretation issue, but I just don't want that to be the basis of, you know, thinking they should get that interpretation.
I think he's just more thinking, like, are we going to get bombarded every month with five of them that want to be 20 feet from another one or next door? And it just...
That's right.
What his concern was, that's what she said, is obviously going to be addressing it.
And even that might be a temporary thing, because if the 500 goes away or gets modified at some point in the future, then it's, yeah, it's a good point. It does matter at that point.
I also want to clarify that besides this gentleman, there has only been one other that we have had to reject because they actually applied...
Well, that's good.
When we're within 500 feet.
They bought the, they bought the property under the, under the thinking they could do it type deal. They didn't already have a contingency contract or you recall that? They went out and bought the property, you know, with the idea, they didn't do a contingency contract, but they went and bought the property with the idea they could do this. I'm trying to sit here, how would we stop that?
Imagine a lot of them already own the property, and then as they continue to grow, they're like, oh, maybe I'll turn this into an Airbnb. This sounds great. It was a rental. I'll trade it. I mean, I personally, but I also know the rules, and I, I know the 500 feet and so forth, so...
I was saying, the, the other one that we had to just called and then three months later applied, and it was by then, we had already have somebody. And they were like, okay, I'm going to wait and see if they renew. So it was just that.
But I just, I want to add to, to what Ray said, that although we've only rejected the two, this one and the one she mentioned, we do frequently, or maybe not frequently, we periodically have people ask, can I do a short-term rental on this property? And we look and say, well, no, there's another one within 500 feet. So we have gotten that question on more than two. It's only been two that have actually applied that we've had to reject.
Got you. Got you. Well, I'd, I'd go in with a contingency contract myself on it, but they didn't, and that's, it fell between the cracks, basically. Everything fell between the cracks. Under this particular case, I was trying to keep it just under this particular case if I could.
And in this, in this situation, that's not possible. You're actually interpreting the ordinance provision.
All right. Thank you.
Can I speak?
Yes, one more. I'm putting my glasses on. I've got my list here. Go down. I don't have a memory anymore, you know? Time takes care of all that. All right, public comment. Come on.
I have some things to ask for you to see. Y'all are a business, so... Anything? I'm the owner of the house.
All right.
Okay. We'll share.
Okay. So my name is Doug Robinson. I was born and raised in San Angelo.
Did you say Doug?
Robinson.
Robertson, okay.
Uh-huh. Born and raised in San Angelo. I'm a business owner. Have a couple of businesses here and a couple in some other cities. So I'm a policy and procedure guy. That's what I am. And so whenever I was thinking about getting into Airbnb business, I wanted to know the policy and procedures. So what do we do? We call Sheri Bailey with the city, talk to her. Sheri gets us there. She's like, okay, first and foremost, you need to call me first to make sure there's not a 500 feet. And I'm not, let me tell you, I'm not throwing Sheri under the bus at all because she had bad information. But call me, see if we have 500 feet. So we called, we emailed. There's 14 different ones that we did. But this was back in October. So we bought two houses, went through the process. Process was not a good one. Not a good one at all.
You earn it, don't you?
So, but we were trying to follow the policies and procedures. We got them through, so we're good. So, so we took a break. About in April, we started looking for some other houses. So we called and emailed Sheri about 14 addresses. Now, a lot of times, Sheri's busy, so she wouldn't email us back, or we wouldn't get a call back, so we'd have to go visit her. So there might have been more than 14 houses. And, and I, we understand, we're not, we're not saying that we wanted a house within the 500 feet. We're not saying that. What we were trying to do was follow y'all's policies and procedures and, or the city's policies and procedures. And so that's what we were doing. So May 24th, we found the house on Princeton, 172-5. First thing we do, call Sheri. Sheri, is this one good? Yep, this is good. You're good. No, no other house within 500 feet. Okay? Did a follow-up email, 531. Things good. So we told the homeowners, look, we'll pay it, but we want a quick, we want a quick closing. Because we didn't want somebody coming in during the time and putting an application in. So we said, let's do a 10-day closing. I think we closed it in seven. So June 8th, we turned in the application for Princeton. Everything's good. Now, between June 8th and June 29th, we're over there painting. I'm painting electricians, I'm painting the handymen, I'm paying, you know, we're decorating it. Although, we know that we still have to go before the zoning commission to get done. But in doing that, I'm meeting the neighbors, and I'm talking to the neighbors, and I'm telling them, hey, you know, I'm from San Angelo. This is where, I've got businesses here. I'm, you know, this isn't going to be a bad neighborhood. And, and I'm meeting them. I'm glad-handing them. Because we know there's a yard sign that's going to go up and all that. So fast forward to June 29th, I get a call, look down, San Angelo Planning and Development. Like, all right, this Sheri, Sheri telling me that, you know, you're going to be on the next agenda or whatever. Well, that was Ray. She goes, hey, is this Doug Robinson? I said, yeah. And she said, well, this is Ray. She said, I got bad news for you. And I'm like, oh, okay, what is it? She goes, well, we're going to have to deny your application. I said, what, what, why? And she said, well, because there's another one within 500 feet. I said, no, there's not another one within 500 feet. There can't be. I talked to Sheri. Sheri told me there wasn't. And it says that, well, I just spent $172,000 on a house, on y'all's information. And she goes, well, I'm sorry, but that's it. And Ray was very nice, very, you know, email my bosses is what she told me. So that's what we did. And well, then I, well, when I was talking to Ray, I said, well, how can that be, Ray? I said, there's no way. We talked to Sheri. I said, oh, wait, did someone apply between the time we bought the house and the time that we applied? That's my, that'd be the only thing. She said, no, it's been back since December. I said, December? I can't be December because I called Ray, I mean, I called Sheri on May 24th and on May 31st. She said, no, that, that, that's it. So to make matters worse...
Well, it can get much worse than that.
What?
It can get much worse.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, exactly. Well, to make matters worse...
Merry Christmas. Where's your Christmas present?
She said, I, I went up there again, I think it was when I was going to talk to John and him. I said, well, we've got to, y'all've got to fix this. Y'all can't sit there and say, hey, you're able to do this, spend this amount of money, and then pull the rug out and go, no, sorry, we're joking. You can't do that. And I said, because this is going to happen to somebody else, not just me. And Ray looked at me and she goes, it already has. I said, it's already happened to someone else? Yep, and it's the same Airbnb that, that was the problem. I said, okay, all right, well, then we really need to fix it. So I went and talked to John and Aaron, and great guys, we had a good conversation. And I told them they needed more steps. If you're going to be an Airbnb, this is what you got to do. They did that. Right after that, I had an email, and they got it all planned out, and it, and it looked great. So just to recap, I would have never bought that house, just like those other 14 houses. I would have never bought that house if it, if I'd have known that it was in 500 feet. How am I supposed to know that? I mean, I'm supposed to come to the city to know that because they're supposed to know. And so the only information that I had to go on was the city. I can't pull that information out of the air. So I, I'm just asking for a variance just because I don't think that's right. I think if this was San Antonio, Dallas, or something like that, I think this could happen. But in San Angelo, Texas, where we're all kind of neighbors, I don't think this, this should happen. And, and, you know, like I said, I've got another Airbnb, and let, let me tell you, you know, the people, I know there's a bad rap on the Airbnbs, but man, we, I, I hear so much, because we have a Ring cam, and you can hear them talking. And the best thing was, this lady said that, her and her husband came down, her husband was working and, uh, doing some sort of computer work, and she had a kid that, with a stroller and all. And she said, she talked to him, and it was, it was one of the mornings that was nice and cool. And she said, man, I love this neighborhood. She said, I talked to the neighbors, we're all, they're all talking about how cool it is and how nice the neighborhood was. So it's, I mean, it just makes you feel good being from San Angelo and people coming in. And we haven't had any problems with parties or anything else. And like I said, I'm not an Airbnb guy that's going to buy one and move to Dallas or San Antonio. I'm here and I'm going to keep them here, you know? So I just want a variance. That's all I need.
Right. Right. Thank you.
I would too.
Well, let's see. Let me go to my list here. Let me put my glasses back on. All right, any board comments on this? I'm sure there is.
I'd like to make a motion to approve appeal of interpretation.
I'm going to second whatever she said, as long as it's a good thing.
Is that what you want me to say?
Reversing the planning director's interpretation that it cannot be varied, meaning he can seek a variance for the 500-foot separation.
Yes.
Under this circumstance?
Oh, this is general.
I'm trying still, aren't I? Yeah. Yeah. Well, never know, we can slide it in. All right, so, yeah. All right, we have a...
I will just note that, just like a variance, this does require six affirmative votes to approve.
All in favor?
Hold on, let's see. We had a second? We got a second? You had a second? Okay. Any more comments? Anybody from the board? That's it? All right, here we go with the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? That was a nay. That was a nay. That was good timing. You do that on purpose? No. All right, it passes 7-0. Good luck.
Thank you.
I guess you'll be there whenever they have the redoing of the...
They'll be here next...
We'll see you at another meeting.
Next month.
Oh, okay. Okay, when are they going to have the redo on the short-term rental meeting at the coun- at the council level, I guess?
Yeah, in fact, that was under the report, the next item on the agenda.
Oh, is it?
If we're, if we're there, the only thing I had to mention, I briefly mentioned it earlier, but we will, we are in the process of drafting some changes to the short-term rental ordinance that will be going to planning commission in the next couple of months.
Okay.
So what are, what's the timeframe, John, back to the sign in the yard and all that for planning commission?
I think we looked at some dates. I think we're actually past the deadline for the next ZBA meeting, but I think we have time to get them on it and get all the notices out. We'll just have to get them out this week, but if they can get us an application in the next couple of days, I think that'll work.